Okay, um, let the record show that, um, we're having a normal official meeting. Um, record show that we have our board of attorneys that's all present at. And so now, Ms. Lundy, Ms. Mathis, Ms. Carlton, and myself as superintendent. At this time, can you please stand for the opening prayer?
Um, most prayers to him and following Lord, we just thank you for your grace and Father God, we thank you for your mercy. And Lord, Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to be here together tonight and do business as a district and a board, Lord. Father God, we just pray, Lord Jesus, Father God, of skill and wisdom, Lord Jesus, Father God, and just that you would give us, Lord Jesus, Father God, the wisdom, Lord Jesus, Father God, and just, Lord Jesus, Father God, just, um, cover us tonight as we meet and conduct the business of the board, Lord Jesus. We pray that you would just continue to view us as a district, Lord, giving us eyes that can see, ears that can hear, and hearts that can see, Lord. We just thank you for this opportunity to be in your presence and to call upon your name, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the equal rights for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are in adoption of the agenda for government administration meeting tonight. That's it. Great, well, the record also showed that Ms. Agnew has won this. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to one point and three, elections of the board for happy nominations. A nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Real good. Thank you.
We move on down to the last chair, and we have nominations.
Make a motion that, obviously, Donnell, you went last year.
Well, all in favor, starting with you, a nomination. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Carrie.
Who's second?
I'm you.
All right, establishment of a regular meeting place, dates, and times.
Can you talk about it?
Can you talk about it?
We need to go past five o'clock just a little, because it's hard to be here at five or get off at five. Um, you never know what the day is or when, you know, so actually, even if it's ten after, five after, five is real hard for me. Or we can move it to a Thursday. I could come on Thursday afternoon earlier.
It's difficult because I think some, you know, kids are involved in sports.
Yeah.
But normally, I need to be at five thirty.
Did you five fifteen?
If that's five fifteen.
Um, I wasn't gonna ask, but I did want to see what was the pleasure of the board, because, um, I know some of us are still working, some of us are retired, but given my current situation, um, you know, I am, you know, having to, you know, cause of the current situation with my husband, I am having to explore and form an opportunity. So I knew that we would set a time at this meeting, but I was gonna ask that, because we agreed to keep it as it was, because we entertained coming back at a later time, but since this text has brought it up, I am gonna ask that, but we can't change the time from that. Um, what comes with that, you take it with me? Like we said, five fifteen, I mean, whatever I do, I wanna be off at five, and again, whatever I do, it doesn't come to this here for hours, but I don't want to get something in this at five o'clock in the evening.
But, but for you two, five fifteen or five thirty would work.
Right.
No, what?
First to third.
First to third.
Who's at five fifteen? I second that.
And then it'll be good now, okay. So we're down to motion the second for the first and the third, T B C, at five fifteen.
Now, and that's, that's for here, now, if we want to come back and modify it later for some hatchet or something, we can do that, but no, that's.
So we have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All, so Carrie, now we're down to the appointment of school board attorney.
I motion for, um, we continue our current contract with, well, we continue with Ms. Angela Law as our.
I second that.
All right, motion, big movement, Ms. Donnell, and second by Ms. Mathis, that we retain Ms. Ball as our board attorney. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie. And, uh, then we have the appointment of board members to serve on individual committees. Um, number one is district and representative in the whole country.
Can I make a statement? I'd like to continue that, because I do have another year as chairman there, but I'd like to continue.
I nominate, right, I second that.
For the representative, now, that wouldn't be all for that, we'll have to go to another one.
Can I ask who, Bonnie, did you serve last time, I'm sorry?
I did. Sure, you know, you.
Not of this year.
Wait just a minute. Not according to this, I, Bonnie did it one year, but according to this, it was, this was last year, right? With Jenny.
Okay, okay.
I thought it was last year, because I feel that.
I think I'll be able to do it again.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I just was gonna ask that, I think at some point in the board, we are going to have to take into consideration terming, and it's just, it's hard to hold a lot of knowledge, just whether you miss the line you, but I think to set the position, set the position for a year for the board, prepare ourselves for timing, I think we need to look at, um, alternatives and alternatives, we need to look at the different cycles, because, you know, how different.
Because you two possibly could have four more years than those three, because I'm on the same timeline as they are.
So, um, so maybe what we should do is, with the alternate, with this bit, like, we should make a point to attend with you where we can, and you have meetings and stuff, so you need to start to educate us, because you have a D H D, and, I mean, whichever other, as it be an alternate, we need to make arrangements to work as closely as you would be coming on the stages when you can't be there, so that we can learn from you.
Well, as, as an alternate, um, does, I, would it, would it, um, would it prevent, if the representative of the, of the, of the district is there, could the alternate be there?
Okay, okay.
So if someone wants to be there, receive, grasp, and learn.
That's what Jenny said.
I just think to set us up as a district, we need to take that into consideration.
That's what we call it.
Exactly, so, I mean, unless something changed between now and then, right now, this is the position we in as a board, and I think we need to look at that, we'll be looking at alternatives that we.
So what, right now, we have a, correctly, I'm wrong, but we have a motion for, um, Ms. Carlton to be represented, Ms. Mathis to be the alternative.
Yes.
And, um, did we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, you second it. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie. All right, for our small school district consortium, who do we have next?
Detroit.
I mean, if anybody else is interested, I'm fine with, Jenny, I don't know if you're going to want to.
Well, for God.
Are you interested, Ms. Mathis?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, well, I'll say if I need to.
Well, I nominate you.
Okay. We have a second on that nomination.
I think.
Uh, Ms. Carlton, second it. All in favor for Ms. Donnell, serving in, um, the small school district consortium?
Now, do we need an alternate for that? Haven't we always do alternate?
We, we've never.
Obviously, it's a representative, and though.
Oh, they have an alternate.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie. Transportation committee.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. And I'll be happy to, to stay on if, if.
Are you sure it's you? I thought it was me.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was me. Well, actually, it's Jenny.
That's why I was, I had been doing this all year long. It was a transportation.
I, I, I somehow.
I was on it sometime or another, but I thought it was this year.
I, I have been doing it, but.
Jenny was a year before.
Just past year.
Um.
Are you standing, are you interested in standing, Mathis?
Uh, yes, I will, I mean, I've done it just past year, it's been.
You're in town. My home, it feels like I'm a crap thing, it would, I mean, I.
If you would rather it be somebody who's in town, that you can have it the last minute.
Jenny, I think I'll do a couple of things. And he's in town, and that helps me with this, and if I can't go, and I'm able to get him to go, I'm doing it, and I'm being there.
Then I make a nomination that, um, if you're gonna bring it.
Um, I'm ready.
Brother Danny, does it?
I second.
Okay, you second that, okay. Uh, so transportation committee, I was, her was asked, um, and the motion second been made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie. Safety committee.
Now, I have been serving, but I want to ask, is anybody else interested?
I think somebody should help, try. Everybody should help, try.
But it's hard, I hope, I would nominate you as getting.
Do you want it to be somebody in town?
No original plans to develop consent decree from nineteen eighty-three or here today. But this is still impacting your county, your county is still under this today. You still need to follow it. That's the original map which you're still using today, actually, which is one of the reasons your deviation got so bad in the first place. Local ban on, local ban on gerrymandering. So, in addition to the timeframe that the legislature put in place this year, they also put a ban on incumbent gerrymandering, so, but this is kind of, it's kind of very specific. So say, I was drawing the map and I looked at Mr. Lundie's address and I specifically used his address in order to make a determination about the map. That would be illegal. So it's only specifically advised if I asked you what your address was and you tell me, oh, I live at, you know, where I live, where I work, this is where I live, you know, draw the district base, all of that, that's not allowed anymore. It's kind of crazy that it was allowed in the first place, but obviously we're going to keep all that above board and not worry about that. So here's a concept draft, draft map, which we can, we can look at a little bit more. I have a copy of it, or I have a copy of it, if y'all want them. That is possible, so I have that too. Yeah, sure. Like we're in school.
Yeah. I wouldn't with this type of A.
So it would take effect for the, it would take effect as soon as the county and you guys pass the ordinance or whatever, whatever you call it, but it would take effect immediately.
But it has to take effect before February what?
February eighth.
Eighth?
Yeah. That's it.
Do you want to say? Well, I want to see if this is clear.
It's probably not going to be as clear as the Google map, which we can put up there.
See, this is my question, when you're doing this, you have people who are already serving in office. So when you read district, are you going to have two elected officials in the same district depending on where you draw the line?
No, that's not, we can't, we can't consider that, but no, that's not.
Right, you said you couldn't consider an address.
We can't consider your address, but no, that's not. We also can't, we also can't explicitly, like if I explicitly wanted to, you know, say, I looked up where you lived and I looked at where Mr. Lundie lived and I said, I'm, and I said, I'm going to put you all in the same district, I can't do that. But so like, the goal is not to, the frame could be double bonk, that's the goal, is not to double bonk, but I can't consider your address, but no, that's, I mean, the main goal is just getting you within that equal pocket vision threshold. That's the primary, because you're four points out of times per, over the legal limit, which is like, you know, which no one would be, like you, you know.
But if we read, if we were to, you know, redraw a map, which is what we're going to have to do, it wouldn't kind of impact someone that was just elected in twenty-two, right?
Your district, I mean, your district, everyone's district's going to change.
Right, it will, but that's what I'm saying, us being.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact your term.
Make them come out of office.
No, no, no.
But the next time they run.
You're running under a different map, correct.
In that district that they go serve.
So if you had run, so for everyone who ran under twenty-two under this map, it doesn't impact your term.
But for the ones that haven't run, run next year, the election will be in twenty-four.
Yeah, in twenty-four, it'll affect.
It will affect them when they, if it goes and it'll affect, if they're.
Right, yes, it will, it will. You'll be running under a new map, yes.
Yeah. But it possibly would not change their district. It probably would not change.
No.
Their district.
But you could be qualified in a different district.
I don't think that.
You could, you could be, but, you could be, but again, that, that's not, that's not the goal. The goal is just to change the population threshold to put you under the legal limit and do appropriate. That's the goal. The goal is not to create any.
To district anybody out of the.
Right, the goal, that's not, we couldn't, we couldn't explicitly do that because that would be, that would be illegal. The goal is just to get you within the population threshold necessarily.
But it's called double bonking when it does happen.
Right. But it, to be honest, if you're going to double bonk someone, it has to be fairly intentional and that's not, that goal. But again, like I, I'm hesitant to speak about it in comparison to this, but no, that's not, that's not the goal. Like I can't say, oh, you know, it won't happen, but.
Well, you have, this also affects the county.
Right, and so, right, and so it affects that too. I, I mean.
Within several blocks of my line, but it's on the far end of the county, so it wouldn't, would not affect me most likely, or you wouldn't redraw where I live, but, you know, for anyone who lives within a few blocks of their existing line.
Well, we wouldn't consider, we wouldn't consider her, just, just so you know, but.
And I'm a lot of the entry.
But, but, but also.
But you would, you would be like, even though I'm a regular representative, I would know.
Just, just to be, just to be clear, if you guys said, like, if, if Ms. Agnew said, hey, I have a suggestion for the map, we'll, we'll draw for you. If, you know, Mr. Lundie said, hey, I think, you know, this neighborhood should be in my district or not in my district, because, you know, they're former constituents or like, you know, that's totally fine, we're, that's the thing that I think.
So I would question.
Go ahead.
So whenever you all look at these maps, you don't consider anything but population? We're not looking at any type of.
Well, that you're complying with development consent decree, other than that.
So you all look at that?
Yes, because, yes, because, other section two we have to, but, but only to the extent that we can confirm.
So the thing is, you know, in the, normally every district ends at the courthouse steps.
Okay.
But in the re, in the redrawing, it's not going to do that, right?
I mean, if, if that was.
In the past, when we had, we had drawn districts, they all, each of our districts ends at the courthouse.
We can make that work.
That's a fun fact.
We can make that work. I mean, I can't promise anything, but there's things you could do to make it work. If that's a, if that is something that you guys and the county commission agree on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the numbers and like District One, just for sake of argument, went up three hundred people, okay? Your District Five, or she, aren't you District, um, your District Five, yours went up nine hundred people. So District Four went down three hundred people and District Three went down a thousand and two hundred people. The District Three is the big, where you are, right? Because you've had so much population moving into the state compared to before, so they had to deviate that and I don't see, I think that, these maps are not, I think the District, um, around District, is this you then, District Four, is taking up a lot of your, um, deep intent.
Yeah.
Well, that's Dan's.
What's your four?
Where I'm taking some of, like, three hundred of, of people.
Just to be, just to be clear, this is just a concept map to show that it's possible. And if you guys want to make suggestions to me right now or email me or whatever, we will happily chase the map for you in any way you want, just so, just so you know. But the, the primary purpose of this, again, like as Ms. Agnew just mentioned, is look, we're at forty-seven point six percent, we need to get under ten. So District Five has to grow, District Three has to shrink. District One, Two, and, and like obviously, you know, the concept map, I think the deviation is only four something percent. We can push it to higher if you guys want. You know, you say, hey, I want to keep more of my constituents, hey, I don't want to lose this neighborhood, whatever, we'll be happy with it.
Long as you stay under the ten percent.
Long as you stay under the ten percent, correct.
It's like, well, if you're not drawing.
No.
So I don't think we want to be.
You can be, you can be different from the county. I would, I think it should, right, the election might kill you, but you can.
If we, if we make any changes, like you just said, we'd be different from the county.
Well, the, I mean, so.
Well, we want to stay the same, we definitely want to stay.
Right.
Well, you got two precincts in every district and you want to keep that the same.
But, so yeah, so.
But y'all got to keep your mind.
So confuse ain't going to show up the vote.
But you got, but you got to keep in mind, your school might want to stay, but if the county choose to go a different way, you can't make the county go the same way.
Well, we want to agree to come, to come and agree to him.
That was my point, I was saying, he said, we could tell him what we want and he could change it, but technically.
We want to agree.
I would, I would think we want to be the same.
No, I mean, it, it doesn't really make, I can't think of any Jersey, or any county in the state that has separate maps, because there's really no reason to, because it just makes sense to have for everyone running.
Yeah, and, and if you can keep the district numbers and like the precinct numbers of the district that they're in now, you'll be way ahead because if not, you've defeated your purpose as far as voting counts.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, wholeheartedly, listen. No, so, but again, the primary purpose of this is, so, is to get under the forty-seven point six percent.
Yeah.
So in other, in other smaller kind of rural counties, what, what they do to sort of come to a consensus is they do this thing called a workshop consensus, too, but the county will be there also. So it'll be the ten of, there'll be the ten of y'all, I would presume to be here because the county is a little tight. And the public's there, the public can make suggestions as well. And so, you know, the two representatives from District Three, like Ms. Mathis, you tell me, hey, you know, I, I think this and the commissioner for three will say this, and you sort of take all that together, you come back with a plan that synthesizes all, synthesizes everyone's opinion. So that's what I would suggest doing, and again, you know, they, they're not going to talk, they're not going to talk about your district until the twenty-eighth, but that's up to y'all on board, so.
I want to think we did have a one panel with that, we talked on another, um, we had it here, we're not going to miss the board if anyone, that's not, you've got a lot of work already. People ask all now.
No, I'm, I'm just here for a question here, the, I, we, I have a, there's a Google map that I sent the county attorney that you can view the streets, streets on of our concept map and you want. If, if that's like something we want to put up at the county meeting, that's fine, whatever, whatever works, but.
I would like a copy of it.
Okay.
To, where's that from Angela, with that, if you can get it to her, things.
Same thing, like you pull up Google Maps, yeah, Google Maps, you pull up on your computer.
And you can see all the lines.
Yeah, you can see the streets and the.
That would be great. You can send that to me.
No, it's up to you. Yeah.
That, that meeting's the twenty-eighth of this month.
Correct.
Twenty-eighth of February and when?
Not up to me.
See, it was a campaign registration.
Oh, I think.
For, yeah. That's the county commission for them.
So this is a workshop for us, so we can't make any decisions that just mean we have to bring this back or.
No, we still.
To give a, decide what we would put through, but I just would like for us to keep in mind, for us as going to Tampa, that's the twenty-eighth.
It's a Tuesday night before we leave on Wednesday.
And what time of the night, some of us.
With some of us go before.
Yes, we got to go before Wednesday. So, um, I just want the board to keep that in line on the twenty-eighth.
What time is that meeting on?
Uh, nine.
I think they, they've been joining meetings next.
Six, I mean, that, that's when we, with the meeting began, so.
That, that's not, that wouldn't be a joint meeting, we'd have to schedule.
But I would agree with that.
Yeah.
So that we, what we do have on maybe, I'll, I'll understand a little bit.
So, uh, so just a question for, for everyone, is there any sort of specific, you know, neighborhood or streets that we can look at, like, right now and just think, you know, hey, like, I think this should be in my district.
Until we get that moved out.
Okay.
But we don't, this is too vague.
Got you. But the, you, y'all read that the forty-seven point six percent is a problem.
It's just a couple of districts that need to be with anything.
Real, yeah, realistically, I mean, a couple.
Yeah, in reality, you wouldn't have to do this whole map, in reality, you would only have to do District Three.
Well, I mean.
District Five.
District Three, District Five, right.
Yeah, and you could probably, you could leave the others alone. And that, that would be my suggestion, because it would make life simpler for everybody. Just do two, not do the whole thing. Just do the problem.
We may, we may have to, we may, I mean, because you're still at eighteen percent, which is a little high between two and four, so we may have to tweak that, but we may have to tweak those just a little bit, but.
One is six point four.
Right, but, right, but ten plus ten and minus, minus nine, you're, you're at nineteen percent, right? So that's double legal.
Something that's also important when we look at those, there are.
That's seen, jumping out of line, but you have to look at the number and make it two, that you want to make sure you, that we have the correct representation for.
You have to be very careful when you're just willing in, because we, the representation has to be there.
Uh, I understand. So.
I think that's what I always liked about the courthouse thing, because I'm so far down at the end and out of the main thing I always liked, that at least I knew I ended under the courthouse if I walked my district, but that didn't.
I figured it ever did.
I don't. It did.
No.
Well, that's what they told me when I went to the, and picked up my maps.
Eight years ago.
Quarter of this one, you're not there.
Where's the courthouse on this one? Anybody have any other questions?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you, can I ask a question? So we, um, even though we're not going to make any decision, I guess we need to talk for the next meeting or not, but I mean, we've got to move rather quickly to do whatever, to get an idea of whether the players are going to respond to this, maybe attend and do that hopefully sooner than a regular meeting.
I think we're going to probably have to call a meeting before December fifth, because our next scheduled meeting is not to be summer fifth, so we're going to have to call a meeting.
February eighth.
February eighth, yeah, we got to.
Right, but I'm saying, our next scheduled meeting is not to be December fifth and the county meets on the twenty-eighth, so I know of the county meets on the twenty-eighth and we do look at scheduling a meeting, a joint meeting with the commissioner as far as a workshop. I feel like we're going to have to make a decision before it be summer fifth on that, so I think we might need to look at, and what date we can schedule between now and December fifth.
What time do they meet on the twenty-eighth?
It's six.
What, what we could do is look at, put a tentative date of what we feel like we can meet and then I could ask them at the board, meeting that night, if they would like to meet with us on that day, we'd like, you know, offer that like a joint, so that we can all get in invigils. What y'all think about that?
That's, that's our turn.
What we need to do.
And for.
You could participate in their workshop on the twenty-eighth, but some of you are going to have calendar conflicts, so.
I can be there, I'm assuming that they're going to take action, it's not set for action on their agenda, so I don't, I believe so. I mean, I haven't seen the agenda yet, but it's, it was designated as another workshop, so they're going to have to take action on it, so it might be prudent after that date to set a time to address this again with this body and then invite them as well. You all can go to their meeting, they can come to your meeting and share information and that.
Is this something far as the scheduling of a meeting, would that require Alicia and Ms. Lawanda to schedule, or how would that go far as the scheduling of, of having a joint meeting? Would that be something Alicia and Lawanda went up to do, is something the comrade can arrange?
Either one.
Okay.
So, so the plan is for us to go to this, I mean, make sure many of the members of the twenty-eighth listen to their workshop, get our input there, and then, I mean, I can go ahead and reach out to Ms. Pemberton tomorrow and say, we'd like to have a joint meeting after you've had time to workshop, we're workshopping ours tonight, they're going to do this with them, so then I can speak to them.
They do that workshop, schedule on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow and say, we'd like to have a joint meeting after their workshop, would that be good with everyone?
Just do it on the fifth.
If, if I may add, I know that some of y'all have calendar conflicts, we'll be able to, you know, if you guys go up to county commission meeting and state your preferences, we'll be able to discern in that way, what, you know, what you guys think the map should look like, but again, if not all, if all of y'all aren't going to be there, it's up to y'all. So I'm just saying, if, if that makes it easier, you don't have to schedule the joint meeting, that's up to you guys.
Well, commissioners basically give the option of calling in, so I'm sure of us that are not in town can appear by phone, I think we can make those arrangements if we need to just to listen in on the meeting, so we'll, it's not like we won't be in the booth. I mean, we can't physically be there, but we still got other options, how, how we can.
But you're basically saying that the ones that show up on the twenty-eighth, we, we make the decision that night or not?
No, we can't make the decision that night because that's their workshop, that's a workshop. I understand, we, we would give us the opportunity to be aware of when they decided that meeting.
Yeah, it's just, so because of the independence of the two boards, two bodies, I mean, you're saying it's a meeting, but it's more of a joint workshop and then you each are going to, each group, this commission and the board here, is going to have to make their own independent determination for an action item at a.
Correct.
Agenda meeting.
Correct. But we, but to my understanding, we can schedule a joint workshop with them after this one on the twenty-eighth, right?
That's, that's what I'm getting to, we're not, we're not just going to go to this and be done and we're not going, you know, we're going to listen to what they have to say and then we're going to call a joint together and have discussion with them. Right, and I'm sure if, I don't know their cycle for getting agendas out and so forth, but, I mean, even if all of you were available for the twenty-eighth and you contacted Ms. Pemberton, I'm sure she would be willing to list it as a joint workshop, but unfortunately, some of you apparently are not going to be available, so that's not going to work. So I would just say, whoever can attend that, you might get some more information and then if you're going to, Alicia will attend to the other.
Yeah, and I think those help us, right, just our ourselves, so we get.
Right, so I think.
We could watch even, you know, kind of, I'll forget if you watch it.
So we want to invite them to our, have a workshop after our later meeting on the fifth, or after before our later meeting on the fifth?
Or invite them to our meeting on the fifth and see if they will put the workshop that together on the fifth.
Exactly.
But hi, Elba, we can't make a decision tonight because it's a little workshop, so, Angela, can you please give a guidance? Do we need to call a special meeting so we can decide how we plan to proceed with redistricting? Because we would have to do that before we schedule a joint meeting, right? We don't have to do that?
My thought was that you're going to reach a decision following the workshops that were either done independently or collaboratively with the commission. And then the commission is going to go, I mean, they're ahead of you because they're on, coming up on a third meeting, so they may have better, better ideas from the concept map of where they might be headed. So you might be hearing, hearing that at the, at the workshop on the twenty-eighth and then that may give you some clarification, but would prompt further discussion by this group, and then you'll determine at that point whether you like the map they may settle on or you want your own map. And as Mr. Dye has suggested, there's probably going to have to be some real discussion of that, how, how difficult that is and so forth.
Because even on the twenty-eighth, they may not be getting conclusive on what their maps are going to look like, it may go to another meeting.
So we don't, we don't, again, that's what I'm saying, we can't decide tonight, but we don't need another meeting to say we're going to decide.
We are going to need another meeting, now, if you want to calendar that now, so it's on the books, you certainly can do that, but it's clearly going to be after the, the fifth, which everyone is anticipating will be a joint workshop or collaborative workshop with the commissioners. And you never know until you start working ten calendars.
Right, that's what I'm trying to understand tonight, who will need to do what, because they got their meetings up here now, and I know we have our meetings, but we're going to have to, like you say, look at calendars, I just want to know who needs to be on top of that so we won't drop the ball. So is that Alicia need to begin with, Ms. Pemberton, or what?
I'll go with Pemberton tomorrow and ask her, what her, you know, after the twenty-eighth, if we feel like we need to have.
Well, but after you all, right, after you all review these Google, I forwarded the email to you, we can use maps, and those of you that can be available on the twenty-eighth will be able to hear what the county is looking at conceptually and then, you know, you could set another workshop.
But then after the fifth, what is their next meeting? The commissioner's meeting after the fifth.
They got, their next, their next meeting is the twenty-first.
I mean, the twenty-eighth, I'm all done.
Um, on the fourth, December fourth. They got a meeting on the fourth and on the December nineteenth.
So we can't ask for the, or mark on it. And that thing.
Yeah, they got December nineteenth and December fourth, but it's a summer meeting.
And we need on the fifth, because we never got to the top of the following. And then we come, let me see, can I ask, but the pleasure of their board is as well.
Right, and I'll speak to Mr. Bishop about where he sees that they're tracking towards a conclusion, they get their public hearings set and so forth, and then we may want to align our meetings similarly.
I agree with everybody.
I'm going to.
It might be a good idea for each of us to, to try and find time to talk to our, our county commissioner, co-board for our district and find out what their thoughts are too, so that we kind of, within their third meeting, there are things they thought about that we haven't thought about yet, so maybe that would help, so I know I'm going to plan to do that. The question.
How does one being the December?
Right now, it's two. Oh, it has to be.
It's just three.
No, I'm saying part of us, because they got a vote on this, we got a vote on that, so what, what kind of strengths are we under part of sunshine?
I think any of the discussions about this should be done in these open meetings.
You hear that, Jeanne? Make sure you hear this, now, because we still under sunshine.
It would be out of sunshine, it would.
So you're talking about what now?
I'm saying, if we're talking to the county commissioner and we got to their.
Just let the shooting attack and say, talk only district, and I mean, and, you know, we have time to talk, just to think, you know, through.
I would prefer that you do it in an open meeting.
Okay, all right, well, glad I said that, I'll do it, I'll just wait till the twenty-eighth.
So who all, who all in, who will plan on attending the county, you know, committee?
I know.
Misses, and some you, okay, Ms. Agnew, y'all will be out of town.
I'll be late for next one. I'll get my phone, I was on the chat, and I.
I'll be there that you said.
So it's, it looks like there'll be at least three or four there, so.
How long I get to.
I'll get them that.
Angela, I can tell. We can watch on. But you're going to. No, 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 we're, we're going to be at that. We're all going to be at that, but we can watch it online.
I'll be there, I'll say, okay, well, we'll, we'll plan, we'll plan on time to attend along with.
Can you send it to the, um, you want.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
What did you say, Ms. Lawanda?
I'm sorry.
What did you just say, that we want?
I said that those who will be able to attend, I will be there, there'll be two or three of us, waiting for the board, that kind of thing.
Should we put a notice on their door, Angela? Should there be a notice on the door of the county, county commission meeting?
That you have.
And we have three school board members convening with them.
Shannon, I know, I mean, knows how to send out the notices, so that, she sends out the notice that there may be two or more board members that, yeah, so she'll, she'll do that.
You take care of that, boys.
By whatever method she wants.
This appetites us both, maybe, anyway.
Yeah, it is, mm-hmm, yes, and it's already been in the newspaper, right, Angela?
It was today, wasn't it? I mean, I read it this morning.
All right, that clears that up, makes it much, much more muddier, okay. I, next on the items, on the agenda is the item of, of items of concern by the public. We have any, thank you, sir, for the.
Thank you.
Thomas, we won't shoot the message.
Items of interest by the public, if I have anything that you'd like to bring for the board at this time, it'll be your opportunity. If not, the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda and it brings us down to.
Ms. Labby.
Eleven point zero zero, which is concerning, a school calendar.
Wait a minute.
School or calendar today, just, just a second.
Did you all, did you all have something for public?
She said that we need to ask her, and then it's kind of funny that it says on here, now what not to talk about, so I'm not sure what's saying.
Would you like to?[1686.13] Okay, no, I think, I think, I think this relates to an expulsion, is that right? Okay, that is not done in the public forum, so I'll step out here with you all if you want to ask.
Okay. Why they want to say. All right. Take care of two murders once on. All right, so yeah, we're at eleven point zero zero approval of school calendar.
I'm in motion, but I think Shannon, what, do you want to talk a little bit about?
Not really. I mean, the only thing, there's like one extra meeting date on there. Because, well, not extra, but the day that actually wanted to do the final budget hearing.
Is that stuff? Oh, yeah, yeah. In July?
No, they shut.
Oh, she did say.
Yeah, just. But I just added it in there just to do like a just a budget hearing that we not everything.
So we can have our guys.
Right, well, and like if I moved it, it kind of messed up everything else, so.
So if we need to change it later for a reason, we will without.
Those are kind of ten and two based on when our current stuff comes out, but that's it.
Right, and July, it's not the first and the third, it's the the third and the fourth.
Yeah, and that's budget, I mean, we always do it like that.
So, um, so you raise your motion? Motion?
Okay, motion to make a this message, let me have a second.
Second. On the five fifteen. Right, I'll fix that. I'll fix that time. I think I have on that calendar. I'll fix that.
Ms. Carlson makes the second on that. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed?
With with the changes if I'm right, yeah.
Item twelve point twenty three, uh, this is the after university replacement and assignment of the Florida school director. First now is requesting to move Dean position zero one six one five one one three three, which is eight hour ten month. Uh, from pass to the Heather County Middle School. Uh, this is a vacant position and will need to be advertised.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Ms. Carlson makes the motion, is aye, is second.
Um, Ms. Um, the shares can you elaborate?
Yes, um, so as you all know, the the sister principal discipline resigned at Heather County Middle School. And after speaking to the principal, um, she believes that what she believed that what she needed was an additional Dean rather than the sister principal. Discipline she felt wanted Dean as it was what her name was, and I was not going to feel that assistant principal position once that person resigned just because of where we're at funding lots with GP and everything else. Though she asked for an additional Dean, I felt that was something to resist, you know, it's not the same. Um, felt that was something that would grant her, whose that position was like.
All right, so, uh, we've had the motion and second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So here. Uh, voting hearing, item fifteen one oh one, this is, uh, actually having authorized to advertise um, student information plan of twenty 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 four.
Motion?
Uh, that's not the motion, Ms. Carlson's second. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So here. And this brings us down now to items of interest by the board and Mr. Bishop.
Um, I could run it along and out of one sport into the next, um, making way with our, um, claims and our entrants. Trying to think of our policy, fix roughers and I had a, um, it's going to take DVD, I think. They making progress there, um, we have applied and we do have a meeting coming up. Wouldn't think that, so we are on the wrong track and.
Do we have an application yet? For each school?
But it's always, yes, because it's my building.
Yeah.
They've got their, they're ninety, what was it, ninety? Well, the, um, judge, yeah, so they have, and they keep a lot of these entries, some things are going to linger on, but they're not going to come till later, but you know.
So do we have, do we have a copy of that?
We've submitted and we've asked.
You know, we talked about it as a board, just getting a party, having a workshop and we're looking at it.
We'll find, we'll get, we'll find out, we, so we have, we're going through the approval process now, we're finding reimbursement through FEMA. So we could show again, definitely share with you, you know, we asked that far.
When we first talked about it, it was too early, you know. I think we said we were going to, a little bit later, we'd do a workshop whenever we.
Whenever Chris and Shannon finally get there, for, you know, a lot now, we're just now sitting there, thinking of that. We've tried to schedule a meeting in that, we just got confirmation today, they reached out with the, um.
Like, because they're trying to give us fifty percent of deductible, like upfront, because we have to, because being.
Quickly, our.
And we don't have enough to pay all of it without being upfront, so like, we're trying to schedule a meeting with the, at the, you know, to approve, to pump, to give us.
Has anybody researched the what was decided on the house and all for the week they set aside for hurricane relief? Has that affected us?
That's, I think that's what we're talking about. So they would come in and, I mean, we were on the same.
Last week in the.
Yeah, yeah, special session, and there was a lot, it's like H B Houseville one.
Well, then I probably would have not been here to say that.
I was, you know, it's just the house, it's the round sign off, I'm just curious if anybody researched it, see.
I already saw, I didn't get through them.
Does it show what? I'm just curious to see if anybody had any, I think it's about me that, but it ain't really, yeah, but still. Suggestions, I have.
I have not. Anyway, so that's where we're at, um, line of the day for Christmas, I mean, Christmas Thanksgiving, it's been a really big week. Um, that's all I can say, it's going to be, um, line out for Thanksgiving, that's about it, I cannot think of anything. I'm sure there's a way that things I should be thinking of, but. You remind me. Fields of faith, yes, thank, Fields of Faith is tomorrow night, um, we're going to have it at the stadium, however, the weather. We're expecting to have, um, they have moved it to the middle school.
We approved that tonight for the stadium, but I did see that on the.
They're. So they are moving it to the middle school, so not over the field, but at six o'clock, seven?
Well, it's there six o'clock on Facebook and it says five three or something else, so.
Yeah, I think that should work by three tomorrow.
But, um, but they have ever had to the six, six o'clock, I believe, but then I saw how to do a separate house around the back of it, so.
Okay.
Is she all ready?
All right, uh, Ms. Brunette.
Oh, um, just, I mean, kind of like Mr. Sheer's thing, you know, we getting ready to go into the holiday season, so. Um, I pray that everyone is able to, you know, take that time and you really utilize it for spending times with our families. But not just spending times with our family, but really realizing how thankful we are, how far our Lord has brought us this year. And, you know, just keep all those, um, just keep our community and our families in our prayers. Um, just because of the special things we're in this year as a community. Um, and like I said, I just hope our students and our teachers are able really to relax and just be ready to come back after Thanksgiving break to make it to Christmas break. Um, and I don't, I wanted to ask, um, is it just the three, who's, who's, I was going to cancel. Ms. Mathis, are you going to cancel? Okay, I was just wondering, um, because I know we got that soon as.
I got a little bit of a delay maybe, I'm making it exactly. Good afternoon and morning. Start of the normal week, so on Thursday.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, but that's, that's really what it has to, like, I just pray one, what have I, happy Thanksgiving and take that time to really enjoy themselves.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Wagner.
Well, I, oh, one more thing, thank you guys tonight for, um, for your appointment. I want to thank my board for that, thank you.
Um, I was called off for a minute a while ago, expressing myself out loud, um, it's just been, it seems like one hurdle after another. And, um, since we've, you know, had this, we've been different superintendent, and then, you know, it's the storm. And then just closing, and now we're redistricting, and then it's just like, you know, it's like we're chewing up this elephant, but I know we got to do it one bite at a time. But, uh, I'm just thankful that the good Lord is allowing all of us to be here and to do His will and pray. And then, um, this, and that's what I want to pray for, this new concept map that I'm looking at, that it's going to be the best on prepared account. And, you know, we are way behind on it, and I'm glad that we're finally getting around to it and that we have some good people that will make the right decisions. So other than that, I just want to, you know, wish everybody a good Thanksgiving and get ready for the holidays.
I think everything that Bonnie says then, you know, it, when I'm coming up here and running around the steam hatchet, the storm is just so powerful. And so many homes that have been lost in in the steam hatchet, um, um, I'm sure some up here in Perry, but just when I wrap it down, it's just really hard because you see home, every day there's a new home that's being torn down and, you know, it's somebody's parents and somebody's grandparents' home. It's our, it's our kids' homes that, you know, attend our school and it hurts their grandma's home. So that, I mean, just the blessing of of everyone surviving the storm. But also, I just want to remember the families that are having to replace their homes during this time of year and the belongings that they, you know, that they've lost and dealing with insurance companies and, I mean, one of my kids has not had a day off in twenty one days because he's trying to fix his home and come up with his deductible money. And I know that my family's not the only one that's got children and and family members that are working through Thanksgiving this year. Trying to take up the slack for what, you know, what they're dealing with in line, the belonging GP clothes and, you know, and all the indecisions. You know, people that don't know where they're going to be a year from now, those families, so. So there is a blessing in there somewhere, there has to be, but we just want to remember all those families that are that are struggling during the holiday season.
All right, Ms. Carlson.
Yes, uh, as as previously mentioned, of course, we will be several of the ones of our school board association meetings the week after Thanksgiving. Um, but the holidays are are here, and I say holidays, just like Deidre mentioned before, we we get through Thanksgiving. We can do a ah, an oh, and then it's time for Christmas break, but it's much needed not only for the children and, um, but for the teachers and I'm not sure about the parents, we have to deal with that, I know, but, uh, it's just a lot of activities going on. So just be mindful of that. Um, I'm also, um, going to attend a meeting tomorrow at ten fifteen, um, my great name is. Uh, a meeting at ten fifteen at, uh, Bank of East Coast, a long term, Tampa County Long Term Recovery. Um, team, they're trying to see if there's any, uh, if they can get enough interest to pull this team together. Because there's a lot of funding out there and there's a lot of resources that are available, um, to us. If we have, can just manage the, uh, the the details, so, uh, it's going to be held, uh, there's several pastors I know will be there. And it, like I said, it's a public meeting, but just trying to get, to find out if anybody's got an interest in, uh, you know, it's the time for them, I tell you, that's another thing, it really is.
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of, um, um, colorful work that'll have to go, I'm involved in that too. But according to great Chrissy Anderson, they wanting, um, have that organization, it just needs to be revived. And I'm not sure how long ago it's been that she was, you know, when she was a emergency manager. And, um, so, I mean, she's a good resource, but I thought with her a little bit that, you know, ten fifteen in the morning is almost possible, people that work today, um, in attendance. But, you know, again, you've got people that are pastors, they can go and then, you know, but I pray for y'all, I swear to you, because that that'd be a great thing if we can get the funding, because there's going to be a lot of it available, I think, for after this. You know, we're really, we can help people with the, we'll help people with rebuilding, really great.
That's the one, well, the legislation that you were talking about, that I started reading, but, you know, the new things that are coming up. There was like a lot of legislation about the funding, funding help from the storm and it, I mean, it would take a team to stay on top of that and to make sure that we get, you know, everything that we can for our families and for our communities, you know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Mall.
No, it's not, I do have one more, you got to get your ethics training.
Oh, yeah.
Being one of them one Niners, all Niners.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I do want to say one thing, Mr. Flaney. I do want to say one thing, I'm sorry, that I didn't mention, um, do want to thank, um, I'm with Hope. Um, and, um, that organization came through Assembly of God and the company put us in contact with them. And they did deliver teacher supply boxes this week, um, and we've got the filters that are going to go out to the, um, to the older schools as well. They're about probably put into this week, but, um, it was amazing. Dollar General came in, I guess I'll have to post again, I'm going to, um, we're going to have some more things as well. But, um, really want to thank the pastor there because he really helped do that. And then we also had something great, I'm sorry, I mentioned this, uh, much of the high school, though, we had a signing. Hannah Schaefer, yeah, got softball scholarship, um, to Gulf Coast University, so that was amazing. Um, in addition, we always talk about teacher things, I've got some good news. So we went last week to Orlando and met, um, with a company about, um, the new teacher partnership models for coming out. And so we just received information on another model, everything's pending funding, this is a company that's coming in support of that state and have had great success. Um, and so College of Florida are getting on board with that as well, so that is just another avenue. So we we did hear that, I thought it sounded very promising, um, if everything gets approved, then then we look forward to that. And I thought it was the one thing that I felt like, which I think, I forget, because that's it.
Well, they've got a new D school camp.
So.
Yeah, we got a new D school camp, that was good.
New teacher. I don't know where Mr. Just.
Okay. Ms. Mall.
But you have the same old attorney, and thank you all. Yeah, but with all that, um, bit from the beach we talked about earlier, a lot of us are going to be walking out the door. It's going to be a good thing that we have somebody like you that's been there and done that. I remember, uh, Mr., um, oh, what was his name? He used to do what Kiki does.
Mike.
Michael Thompson. Michael Thompson, we were in here one night and he said, I'll go check on that. But he remembered something a long time ago, so just for whatever reason, there happened to be two folders on somebody. So he, if he had not remembered that, we probably would have been a lot, probably, but those things are important, it's important.
Well, in in closing this evening, uh, just want to say, I know that it's it's the season of Thanksgiving and it's already been mentioned, there's so much that has happened, uh, in our community, um. And sometimes we ask ourselves, is there any reason to be thankful? Um, just today I met with two families, one who lost a son. Um, they're poor, left one children behind, uh, talked to another one today that lost his life. At this time of year, um, you know, you ask yourself, is it, is there anything to be thankful for? And the answer to that was yes, in all things, good things.
Amen.
Um, and so there is hope, but we got to find the right hope, we got, we got to know where that real source of hope is. And so I'm hoping that, um, that in this time, because everybody's going through something, I could, I could sit here and tell you one thing after another's going on. Uh, so when you walk by somebody, you may think that they're fancy free and footloose and all that, but, um, I guarantee you, everybody's going through something. And, uh, but yet in it all, there is, there is reason to be thankful. And, um, tonight I pray that we would count our blessings and rest the hope that's there for us. And it will help us all to be thankful. So thankful for this meeting tonight, thankful for breathing one of this board, uh, thankful that, well, I appreciate it that if you chose, I mean, I I'm just nothing but one man standing. But I appreciate their confidence, I guess, to say, you may be chair for another, another year. But, uh, we all have much to be thankful for, count your blessings. And with that said, do I hear a motion and second, that's girl who made the motion, that's over here raised her hand. Uh, seconds, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to this meeting, so.